The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of October 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. Please keep your comments to the 3:30 agenda items. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. Council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting such as repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Reports, Item 3A, Update to the TRIP program.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have several representatives from our Thomas Rhodes Improvement Project program. Looks like Stu Patterson will kick us off, and then Luis Topete and others will fill in on this update.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Go, members of the city council. Stuart Patterson, acting Public Works Director. I have with me today Luis Topete, one of our project engineers, project managers for the TRIP program. I also have Ravi Putapetti, the other project manager for the TRIP program, as well as Greg Garab, who is our program manager representing Parsons for the TRIP program. And Luis is going to give you guys an update on the TRIP program.
Thank you, Stu. Good afternoon. Luis Topete with the TRIP program. So it's been a long while since we did an update for our TRIP program, so thank you for the opportunity. Let me start real quick with a little bit of the history. As you know, the TRIP program started back in 2006 when former Congressman William Thomas brought over $700 million to the region, 630 of them allocated to the city of Bakersfield for improvements on our network, for transportation, our freeways. Since then, our program has grown to over $1.4 billion to date. These are some of the projects that we have completed in 15 years. We're very proud of the progress that we have had. And as you can see, we have over $600 million in construction dollars. This is only construction, so you can see how our project and our program had grown all the way to $1.4 billion. This figure does not include right-of-way acquisitions, design, utility relocations, and so forth. So this year, 2021, was a really good year for us. We were able to complete a few projects. Real quick, I'm just going to go through them. Centennial Corridor Phase 1, the Kern River Bridge. We completed this project, basically included a couple of bridges. And this project was in preparation for the big Centennial project, the connector from Westside Parkway all the way to 99 and 58 interchange. The Stockdale Highway Enos Lane Roundabout also completed this year, not too long ago. I personally have been out there a couple, two, three times last month, and I have not been there in peak hour, but my understanding is that it's working very well, a lot better than what we had before, our four-way intersection. The 24th Street Improvement Project also completed not too long ago. I'm sure that all of us have driven 24th Street. In my opinion, it's a great, great project. We only need Caltrans to finalize the last section, which is their project from Oak to 99. Seems like the last couple of weeks they made some improvements, but they still need to complete their project so that we have a nice flow of traffic in the corridor. The Bell Terrace Operational Improvement also completed this year. We basically demolished the old bridge on Bell Terrace and built a brand-new bridge. Some of the reasons for doing that was a substandard vertical clearance over 99. And the other one, and most important, is that we needed additional room to build auxiliary lanes. In this photo, you can see those auxiliary lanes already built or in construction on both ends of the bridge. So we needed a longer bridge than what it was there. So this project also in preparation for the Centennial project. So right now, we have three projects under construction. Even though Roselle Highway widening is not quite in construction, we had bid opening, and we identified granite construction as the lowest bidder. So next month, we're going to bring an item in agenda for your consideration and approval to award this contract. Baker Street Freeway Connector, which is Phase 3 of Centennial, and also the main line, Phase 4 for Centennial, they're both under construction right now, and percentage completed, you can see there, 70 and 51 percent. So with that, we have another $200 million in construction dollars through these projects. So Roselle Highway, real quick, is basically a continuation of our first segment that we did a couple of years ago when we widened Rosedale. So now we're continuing another half a mile from Callaway to Verdugo. We are adding lanes, so we're bringing Rosedale from four to six lanes. We had, like I mentioned before, we had a bid opening in September. We will award the contract in November so that we're ready to construct January of 2022. A little bit of also history on Centennial Corridor. This is the largest TRIP program project. Our environmental clearance took eight years to complete. We had to acquire over 200 residential properties and about 30 commercial properties. The cost of the right-of-way acquisitions was around $140 million. This project was divided in the four phases that I talked about. Two main reasons for doing that. One, to move Phase 1 forward. We had, at the time, enough federal funding still from our earmarks that were awarded to the city back in 2005. So we had enough funding to move Phase 1 forward. And the other reason, and probably the most important reason, was to seek for additional funding for the other three phases. We were able to come up with three phases, which at the same time were standalone projects that had independent utility, and so that we could apply for funding. So in 2017, it was a great year for us as far as additional funding for our program. We obtained $172 million. This is in addition to what we had in 2006. The first additional funding that we received was the SHOP program through our partnership with Caltrans. They basically funded the Bell Terrace project. They gave us $34 million to construct Bell Terrace. After that, we obtained through competitive basis, $25 million from SB 1 monies, and that helped us go out to bid with Phase 3 of the Centennial, which is the Baker Street Freeway Connector. Then the other two additional funding, INFRA, we are very proud of this particular grant because we were one of two projects in western U.S. to receive those funds in 2017. Our project and another project in San Bernardino were the only ones to receive funding through this program. And then through KernCog, we were able to have additional STIP money. So all that allowed us to complete the Centennial Corridor project without having to bond any money, which was one of the plans when we were designing the Centennial project. So real quick, I talked about the four phases. You see here in orange and in blue the completed projects, Kern River Bridge and Bell Terrace Project. And then Phase 3 in red, which is under construction. Very quickly, this project is going to improve the westbound 58 to southbound 99 connector, that loop that is currently at that location. We're going to improve it, reconstruct it, basically. It includes three structures depicted there in blue to allow for additional off-ramps and auxiliary lanes that will take you straight to Main Offramps or 99, depending on the movement. So this is what we have. Coming from the Westside Parkway on the eastbound direction, you're going to be able to exit to Main without going to 99. It's a straight ramp from Centennial Corridor. We will obviously have the connector to 99, and then the straight connector to 58. This project awarded to Security Paving for about $49 million, and the expectation completion date is early 2022. And here are some of the photos of our current project. As you can see, on the left, that was the existing Loop Connector. We were working on a tunnel on the 58. And then on the right, on the background, you can see that Loop Connector already built, shown there in white. And that is because we reconstructed that Loop Ramp with concrete, reinforced concrete rather than asphalt. Our Phase 4 is the main connector, shown here in green. And in darker green are the structures for this project. This is a 1.2-mile, brand-new freeway, three lanes in each direction, and we have over 20 structures. So very complex project, awarded to Security Paving for $147 million, and the expectation for completion is early '23. So they are about one year apart. And here we have some photos of our current project. The contractor has basically been working on the structures. So you have their different bridges that they are either under construction or they are already built, which is the normal way of tackling these projects. They do the structures first, and probably just in the last month, they already paved a lot of the main line also. They will have to come back and place concrete on top of the asphalt for the specifications. This is my favorite part of the PowerPoint because it really illustrates what we're building, and you have an opportunity to see what it's going to look like through this rendering. So we're looking northbound on 99, and you see the 58 Connector wibbly to the right. And this is what it's going to look like once we're done with our project. You can see that big flyover from 99 northbound connecting to westbound 58. And then all the ramps on the left that I talked about to connect to Main are there. Through the West Park area, this is what it looks like. Well, actually, this is what looked like six months ago. This is kind of an old photo. And this is what it will look like once we're done. The bridge over Limerada is already built, and the bridge on Morello Way, which is the one in the background, is the one that we still have to connect. And obviously, we still have to do all the concrete paving and striping, but this is what it's going to look like once we're done. And then finally, looking from the end of Westside Parkway as we have it currently, this is the Loop at the end of the Westside Parkway at Truxton. And this is what it's going to look like once we're complete with our project. So now let's move on to projects in design. We have the Hagman Flyover, which is the last of the projects that we originally had back in 2007 when we selected the projects that we were going to do. And then we have additional landscaping projects. The Hagman Flyover is basically a connector of Hagman going over State Route 99 and connecting to 204. This project was designed by Caltrans a couple of years ago. However, we didn't have funding for right-of-way or for construction, so we basically shelved the design. During the last year, there was an effort to try to move forward with this project. So Caltrans is currently working on updating the design. They have new standards and new specifications, so they're bringing up-to-date. And we also pulled out a portion of the project, which is a bike path, to advance it because there was an opportunity for funding. So we were able to secure some funding to construct or help construct this project. So the design for the bike path is almost done, and there's only one property that needs to be acquired for this property, and my understanding is that we have reached an agreement. So very soon, we will have everything so that in January, or maybe even earlier, we can apply for our E-76, which is our authorization, to use the federal funding to go into construction. The main line, we also are starting the efforts of obtaining the right-of-way. We have funding for the right-of-way, and we have partial funding for construction through KernCog. There's an opportunity to get some money for construction. Still not official until they vote for it, but we're looking for opportunities, just like we did with the other projects. The Hosking Interchange Landscape Project. So at this point, I will transfer over to Greg Garab and take it from here.
So Greg Garab, I think I'm an adopted son by now with all the TRIP programs being completed. But I was the PM for Hosking at the time. When we built it, landscape was left out for obvious reasons because of the water shortages, but I'm happy to see that we're back here to do a facelift. And so with that, we put together... So we put together a concept that's basically drought-tolerant, motivated. It's got a lot of hardscape features. This is something that we've been kind of vetting through our discussions with Caltrans. And so we've come up with what we think is a really good concept for both the maintenance, both from the maintenance side and from the operations side. Caltrans is very pleased with this. It's got a couple species, one being the blue agave that we think is a nice look for the area, and also palaverdees that we're considering as part of an accent to some of the roadway. Along with that, we've got crushed stone and rock, but also some minor concrete that will give nice texture to the project, and also will make the traveling community, you know, appealing to the traveling community. So Caltrans is really pleased with this, as I mentioned. So we've... There you go. So because of its reception, we've also adopted this potentially for Westside Parkway. Obviously, Westside Parkway being a gateway system for the city, we feel that it also needs some enhancements from a landscape perspective. Because of its size and because of its enormity, we split it up into three phases, this being the first phase that we're working on. We've got the same type of... There you go. Concept. This is just one area that we drew out, the Mohawk Offramp, where we've adopted the same type of drought-tolerant and hardscape look that we think is going to be, you know, quite appealing to the traveling public for the Westside Parkway folk. And then, switching gears here from landscaping, we have two final movements that didn't make the Centennial Corridors project list. We think that this is something that is a city enhancement at Truxton. We think that locally, it'll help congestion relief, both from a Roselle perspective, but also from a California perspective. So we're working on a feasibility and geometric design for potential half interchange at Truxton. This is just a concept. By no means is it something that we're designing yet or anything. It's just all in feasibility. Blue is considered the structure, and red is the roadway. So on your right side, you have an on-ramp from Truxton, which is north to 99. And on the southbound, you have a potential hybrid flyover that will connect the Westside Parkway westbound. So this is just something that's, you know, in the early stages of project nomination. We still need to do a project study report, environmental reviews, but wanted to get city council familiar with this project because of its potential. So that's all I have. KernCog has decided, in partnership with the city, to fund some portion of this feasibility. Caltrans has given us a thumbs up to sort of study these alternatives. So with that, KernCog will be also participating in some potential funding of a study report along with the city for traffic analysis and other benefit-cost analysis. That's all I have. Thank you. And also available for questions, obviously.
Thank you. Any further comments, Mr. Clegg, Mr. Patterson?
No, Mayor, thank you. We're open for questions.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just first and foremost want to say, great job, team. I mean, really excellent work. Not only are the projects first-rate, but your customer service and your, you know, face towards the community and interactions with the public have been really, really tremendous. I've... colleagues have had an opportunity to work closely with TRIP as they have two major projects within Ward 2, the 24th Street Project and Centennial Corridor. And over the years, we've had many, many interactions with various different residents and property owners and stakeholders. And this team has really done an excellent job. So I want to commend you publicly for all the work that you've done. I'm really excited about the possibility of the Truxton improvement. I think that's sorely needed and something that comes up in my conversations with various different community members pretty frequently. So it'd be exciting to see that develop. I do have a couple of questions. One is, my heart goes out to you, and I really want to thank the residents of West Park for all of their patience and their understanding and good nature as we're doing major construction in their neighborhood. I was in Centennial Park, actually, this morning at the dog park, walking my dog, and had a chance to visit with some residents, and, you know, they're all taking it in stride. I just wanted to verify with perhaps Stu, after we're done with the completion of the Centennial Corridor, the plan is to then go back and to make improvements to the roadway in the neighborhood streets?
I'm not sure if we have a specific budgeted item right now. I do know that both as a result of, well, just the age and the condition of the roads, but the result of construction equipment and impacts around there, we will have to take a look at that. But as far as I know, we don't have anything specifically, current year, budgeted to specifically do that. We would need to look for some funds and...
I would like us to look into that as we proceed and look towards the conclusion of this particular project, to then go back and to make improvements to the neighborhood streets that have been beaten up due to heavy equipment and trucks and whatnot. So that includes California, I know that. I'm sure that's on the list as well. But I would appreciate staff preparing for that in future budget years. The other question is with regard to 24th Street, which I think looks great, and we've received many compliments on the landscaping. There was a concern related to some of the landscaping, and some of the trees didn't make it. And so I understand that is a contractor's responsibility, and that they're going to be replacing that. Can we just get, for the public's knowledge, some validation on that?
Yes, councilmember, and through the mayor, you are correct. We did see early in the summer some plantings that were struggling. We had some initial responses there. Given our climate, it is typical to see some plantings not quite make it, and so it's actually something that's been discussed at length. And the contractor has actually met with staff on-site, and we've discussed a plan to replant all of those plantings. We were waiting for cooler weather, so we're getting in the timeframe that we can do that at this point. But would just note that, you know, we did pick drought-tolerant pallets. We put irrigation in. Just again, with our climate, we saw some losses, but those will be replaced by the contractor.
Okay, great. And then finally, I don't think, I think it's within Caltrans purview, and it's actually their project, but just further west of the 24th Street Improvement Project, there's some improvements underneath the 99 Bridge, a crossing Buck Owens. I think it's shared by my ward and Vice Mayor Weir's ward. But there has been what seems to be a delay in the project. Can you just kind of give us an update there and when we can expect that project to be concluded? Because I will tell you, there have been a number of business owners who have been concerned about the length of that project.
Yeah, actually, what Caltrans did was they, even though that's a part of the planned 24th Street overall improvements, Caltrans took that project, and they have actually included it in the work on the freeway at 99, right above it, if you've seen that as well. And so those improvements aren't necessarily on the critical path of the overall project. We have been in meetings. We actually started some regular bi-weekly meetings with Caltrans staff, and that's one of the projects that we discuss regularly with them. You may have noticed recently, about two weeks ago, they did move the K-Rail, which had limited it to two lanes, to open it back up to at least three lanes with a right-turn lane north to Buck Owens, which has helped a lot. But what they've indicated to me is they expect to have that area paved, including under, if you notice, that the ramp now will go between the column bent and the new abutment they've built, similar to kind of California Avenue eastbound to get on to northbound 99. And they expect that that first week of November, they're indicating to me. So hopefully, that will happen, and we will continue to have...
So sometime in January, we should expect the approval. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Weir. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Smith, next.
Thank you, Mayor. Great project, and I appreciate all the work for a lot of years, and it really has improved the community. And the existing improvements, you know, the Westside Parkway coming downtown, I think, has helped the economy of downtown and definitely helps the west side. And I always like to reinforce that, you know, because of the great work that staff did and working in partnerships, we do have no borrowing, that we had expected to borrow over $200 million, and that's a wonderful thing for the city. The Hagman Flyover, I know KernCog, I'm on the board there, and we're getting ready to move some money, and so that project's moving forward. If you could send me the bike path, how it ended up, I've seen a couple of different designs, and I wasn't sure.
What, the bike path?
The way the bike path ended up.
You want just the overall sort of alignment?
Yeah, yeah. If you can just email that to me, I would appreciate it. And I would also state that the Truxton 99 connection is exciting. If we can convince Caltrans that, you know, that works and move that forward, that would be great. So, great work. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Improvements are coming along just fine. Everything seems to be taking shape. And I appreciate that you're looking forward to the Truxton additions in the project there. But is there anything on the horizon for California and Oak? But is there anything on the horizon for California and Oak, for that area?
I'm not aware of specific improvements at that intersection, but what we anticipate is by if this project goes through, because that's what's happening. Obviously, I think everybody knows, everybody's heading east on the freeway. They get off on Truxton, and people who want to continue onto 99 have to turn and go over to California or turn south on Oak and get onto 99 that way. So Caltrans has done some preliminary traffic studies as in anticipation, I'm sorry, not Caltrans, actually Parsons Group, in anticipation for submitting what Caltrans would want to see for that kind of improvement. And there's quite a bit of relief. I don't have the exact counts and numbers, but just by doing that on-ramp combination at Truxton and 99, you'd see a huge improvement at both those, the Roselle Corridor and California.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you to all of you for your presentations.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Gray and Parlier absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Closed session, item 4A, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session. Do we have some students here? Students back there? I don't... Where are you from? Oh, okay, very good. Typically, this meeting runs very short, and it typically doesn't qualify for your class assignment. We'll be back at 5:15 for a much longer meeting, but welcome. Glad to see you here. Reconvening the 3:30 city council meeting. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. One item in closed session tonight, item 4A, and staff was given direction by unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:37.